Okay, it's six thirty Tuesday, October fourteenth. I'd like to call the Weathersfield School Board meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Every morning we stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, we're going to start with another excerpt from John's library for all of us to take and share.
It's been interesting going through these and believe it or not, I'm actually running out of the good ones, which is too bad. The superintendent's always had a section in the town reports and some of them are more interesting than others. But I thought this one was pretty good. This is part of it. Parents must cooperate with the teachers on the subject of discipline and studious habits. They sometimes forget that it's not always the neighbor's children who are at error. The teacher is the judge of this and her judgment is usually right because it is born from daily observations. In a case involving a teacher's power and responsibility, Judge Lord and his charge to the jury uses these words. The relation between the teacher and scholar is a peculiar one. It partakes while a pupil is in school with a parental character is absolute without appeal from any quarter. When exercise within its proper limits, the teacher does not derive his authority from the parents. He holds public office created by law. He is legally responsible only to the trustees who hire him. Between the teacher and the child, the parents personally interfere only by removing the child from school. The schoolhouse is a schoolmaster's castle.
Okay, so next is changes and additions to the agenda. The only thing I have would be to introduce the student school board members and have us sort of vote them in.
Yeah, for my report, I can go in there if you want now. So we have, this year we decided to do something a little bit different with our school board rep. And also the school board rep has also been sort of my right-hand people, which has been great. And they've been doing announcements every morning, which is nice because then our student population sees them. They don't have to see me every morning. And so we have Kendall Hughes, who's here tonight, and Kayla Van Alstine. And then we also have Riley McAllister, who's also one of the, she's the third of our party. And so today, I mean, I meet with them weekly, daily, and we talk about what's going on. And they keep me on the student perspective list, which is great. I think how things are going, so we appreciate y'all being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And will anyone want to make a motion to vote the three students onto our board as student members?
Oh, no.
Okay. All in favor of voting Kendall Hughes?
Kayla Van Alstine.
Kayla Van Alstine.
And Riley McAllister.
And Riley McAllister to the Weathersfield School Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Welcome.
If you have a quick announcement, I think as most people know, next year's in twenty twenty-six is the nation's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of our founding. And every community in Vermont was invited to participate with some activity. And Weathersfield chose to, through the Proctor Library and the Historical Society, to put on a play commemorating a document that's really special to Weathersfield. And we're really lucky that we saved it, it didn't get destroyed. It's called the Articles of Association. And basically it lists the events that are happening in Boston, Lexington, and Concord. And the founding members in Weathersfield signed on to that. And we still have an original copy, one of two that exists in the country. And my wife wrote a play revolving around it. The play will be presented this Sunday at four o'clock at Weathersfield Meeting House. It's a cast of extremely talented lesbians, including our own principal, as Timothy Parkers. And everyone's invited. It's potluck at four o'clock, the play of the raid afterward. Hope to see everybody.
And don't forget there, John, that you're also there, Mr. Hatch.
Oh, yeah. The art of hearing, Mr. Hatch, I might add. Some of the characters have been typecast, I'll tell you right now, you've got to see who Dave Fuller is.
Okay, so approval of the minutes, has everyone looked over the minutes? Are there any changes that need to be made or corrections? If not, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from September ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any public participation? Okay, no public participation. Okay, we'll move on to the administrative report.
Thank you very much. So this is our administrative report for Tuesday, October fourteenth. So first off, we'll start off with our school motto, you know what to do, do it. I think that is sums up sort of how we are doing everything here at school. So like I've talked about in the past, that it's not necessarily the right thing to do, you know what to do. So kids are hearing that, kids are saying it. I think it's a great motto and it's just fitting with what we are trying to accomplish this year at Weathersfield. The next thing on there is our daily thought. So each morning our staff gets a daily thought about something. And so today, it's we have the power as educators to make the students walk out of class feeling better than they did before they walked in. The opposite is also true. When we bring our very best each day, we help ensure they leave feeling their best and in turn, so do we. That's very quite fitting. We have that power over students and students have that power over us. So to go back to how to do this everything, how you're going to approach things. So it's a daily thought for the teachers, so they do get, or the staff, they do get one every single morning at six a.m. Get up really early and make sure I type that it's wait till six a.m. and it's.
Sure.
All right, our mission statement is the mission of Weathersfield School is to prepare and empower students to be leaders of the global vision by helping them develop critical thinking, communication, collaboration skills, and creativity. First off, we have Jeff Brown here, who will be giving us our PTO report. And I'm sure she'll be talking about our amazing fourth annual Pod Rock.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so thank you, everybody, for who came out and supported us at our fourth annual Pod Rock. It was another very successful year. We sold over six thousand paws again this year and had a fantastic turnout from our community. So a little work needed on the Pod Rock drop still, but we will get there. Our problem is we're selling too many paws, making the bags too heavy to actually dump. So now we just need to sort of, I guess that's a great problem we have, right?
We can make it a steam project for this is.
We need something so they can flutter. Like we want to have something to fall out of the bottom, but we can't just have them, as we know, all on at once. So yes, if they want to take on that task. We've been there, done that. Don't want to repeat it. And so, yeah, we wrapped up Pod Rock and we are shifting our focus to Make It and Take It and Craft Fair. So that will be happening on Sunday, November twenty-third. For those of you that don't know, Make It and Take It is an event that we host for children to come and make gifts for free. So they can make up to five crafts and bring them home to either use themselves or give away or save for the holidays. Our intention is that they would save for the holidays to use as gifts. And so that happens from nine to eleven that day. And then three years ago, four years ago now, we did a convention that a craft fair that we hold in the gym. And we are, I think at capacity already for vendors. So we have over thirty-four slots secured for the craft fair that will be happening that day from nine to one in the gym. So super exciting for that. I know the kids look forward to it and we really look forward to the Make It and Take It piece. Otherwise, we did just recently a program grant for Red Ribbon Week, so we are happy to give money towards that and supporting Red Ribbon Week. And I don't know if you have any update later on about this thing next? Because I know we're all very eagerly awaiting the install of that. So I think that was the only other question or comment I had.
And no, I don't have an update, we're still waiting for the bits to hear back from them. So I can jump the gym again and see where we're at.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica, appreciate it. All right, next is our athletic report and our athletic director is under the weather. So I told her I would go ahead and report for tonight. So we're wrapping up fall sports, we've got a great fall sport season and we are almost done with it. And winter sport registration has been up and ready to go. So if you are interested in registering for winter sport, make sure you do so. Okay, so student perspective, we have Kendall, Kayla here tonight, so they're going to talk a little bit about the student perspective and what is going on. Yeah, we're going to do the next slide, sir. Okay, you ready? Help out if you need help.
For Pod Rock, we. I'm going to do Hat Day, we did. We did to raise money for the Lucy McKenzie Humane Society to help animals get a good home.
What do we do for Hat Day?
You get, you pay a dollar to wear a hat or a hood. And you have a wristband to tell like teachers that you have that you donated this dollar.
And why is that special here at Weathersfield School?
Because normally you can't wear hats in school.
It's one of the few days of the year that Mr. Mars left you a hat?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then how much money did we raise?
About a hundred dollars. At the end it was.
Do you want to talk, so Jeff Brown and I talked a little bit about Pod Rock. So why don't you just talk about the Spirit Week that we have, where we have different dress up days? The first one that you all did.
Spirit Week is a week where we dedicate a certain day to a certain. Like a dress. And kids enjoy it most of the time because someone you can express yourself with like that day or like wear your pajamas, you're matched with a friend. But it's normally you can't do.
You can't wear pajamas, you can match like a friend.
Yeah.
My favorite was dress up as Mr. Mars' day. Oh, wait, there was dress up as a teacher.
That was.
I guess I was just Mr. Mars. There was like six of me. There was like six of me out there. And then also the staff could dress up as.
Students.
Students. So I had forgotten that the staff dressed up as student day and I walked in and BJ, who thinks that was a student. And I didn't say anything at first, but I was a little bit questioning her attire that day. So sorry, BJ. All right.
Red Ribbon Week is. It's another like Spirit Week. Yeah, it's like prevent drug use and you get each day a kid wears like something that like that goes with the theme. They get is like a pencil or bracelet that says like, and a ticket that says like drugs, be drug free or something like that to prevent drugs. And it's a raffle. The dance is October twenty-fourth. Let's say sixth, seventh, and eighth grade dance this time. We're having an eighth grade dance coming up. We don't have a date for it yet, but we're still planning just an eighth grade dance and then a couple more sixth, seventh, and eighth grade dances. Yes, and leadership is taking care of it. I'm one of the members to help find dance moves. The costume parade is for kids who just have been there, costumes for like Halloween. And then we go around and walk around the capsule out back.
We're on Parkland.
And then we just do some costumes we go by each way. And they said, why? I think this year we're going to change it and kids are going to be able to wear their costumes all day because some kids have said it's not enough time for them and they want to wear them all day to show off to their friends and to staff members, like the teachers, and want to show their costumes.
You guys did the list pretty good. And the great thing about all of those activities that you all have planned is that you are doing them all. We're all student led, which is great. Showing their voice. So thank you very much, Kendall and Kayla. It's equal, it's not bad, right? Now, a little bit of. I'll remind you next time.
Well, they're not here yet.
Oh, okay. But hopefully we get it before our next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right, Hicks Nichols. We have the one and only Diana Wilson here to lead us in talking about what happened at Hicks Nichols.
We're watching, there's only one.
I am.
I had some communication there that wanted to find out who was another Diana. And I pointed out to our superintendent that the world is left with only one of these. And I agree. My students would agree too. So we had a Hicks Nichols committee meeting the other night. And we had two applications. And so I just wanted to discuss it with the board to get the approval. So I'll start with Collaborative Week, Lisa Robarts, our art teacher, is looking to do a community weaving one where she would have it in the art room. The students would use it during art class, they can use it during their art elective. She also has an open art time during Tuesdays during their lunch that students can go down and work on it. I believe it's lunch, it could be recess, but I think it's lunch time. Thank you. And then she also has, Mr. Marte said, social, emotional students that are going in there to get some extra support. And the cost for that was going to be four hundred dollars. And the committee voted yes for that. We voted in favor of that one. That was one of them. Our second one was from Christine Hughes, Kristen Hugner, and Amy Ham. They were looking for some money for supplies for our math and literacy nights. The math one is going to be here in November, I believe November twentieth is the math night. The literacy one, I think is sometime in the spring. I don't really think that. Maybe it has been decided, I don't know. So they were looking for different supplies for that, for those two nights in regards to that, like pom-pom jars, Hershey Kisses, candy corn, roll fish, jelly beans, poster board, you know, different things for that for the math night. Kind of same thing, similar for literacy night, wore a card stock, laminating sleeves, books to take home, and those miscellaneous items. The committee discussed both of those and the committee voted to, they were looking for two thousand, one thousand for each night. And the committee decided that we would approve one thousand for the math night. And then I'm going to meet with the applicants and discuss a little bit more details in regards to before we do the literacy fund amount. We are going to meet again in January, February, March, sometime before the literacy night so that we can look at it, discuss it, approve it, or deny it, and then come to the board if it's approved. So we want to make sure, we meet the timeframe so that if we want, you know, if we vote yes for it, we approve it, that it can in fact happen. The committee just had more questions. You know, in regards to, they didn't itemize these things out, they just did like a table on the supplies. And so we just wanted a little bit more detail about, you know, what you were looking for item wise and maybe a better idea of cost. Are you looking at Walmart, are you doing Amazon, are you doing lines, trading, that sort of information? So I'm going to meet with the applicants to go into more details about that. So we approved a thousand for that, so four hundred and then a thousand for this one. And to the boards or our student reps or our audience, if anyone have any questions for me in regards to the Hicks League of Community representation?
So I, I.
Hey, I don't know if you can answer this. The Hicks Nickel Fund, what, thirty, forty years ago, it was established?
Yeah, it was established by the Hicks family.
And I know that we generally spend the interest and don't touch the principal's. And if it left in to help personnel grow a little bit.
Right. So roughly now Vincent is our account rep, I'm going to call him that. He reaches out to central office every year for us to let us know what interest is that needs to spend. And we always stay within that. I believe it's thirty-six thousand something dollars that we have available right now at school for Hicks Nickel friends.
It was sixty, I'll tell you, one said it was sixty-eight thousand.
Sixty-eight thousand.
In that area, so around.
So we have plenty of money available for fourteen hundred.
Yep.
We would never.
Investment income from the.
The committee would never approve anything that went over our limit. We always know the balance before we do the approval. Very money conscious stuff.
But, but at least some of it has slid back into the principal's, so otherwise it's being chewed up with.
Right. I think.
As a trustee of public funds, John, the money is, the money that we receive for the school is only interest made. The principal never changed it. And the town public trustees, trustees of public funds for the town do not, they just manage, kind of manage that money. We have people that come in and explain that to us, but that principal's never touched. It's just the interest we get every year from that account that they spend in the committee.
I understand that. And, and my point is that in thirty-four years, inflation has chewed away at the principal. And if possible, we should be putting a little bit back into the principal to help make up for. I believe when the Hicks family donated, it was a million, something like that. And it's still at a million. So a million forty years ago, it's a whole lot different than a million today. But anyway, that.
I'm not sure with the way that, the town that they gave me that. But I hear you, I know what you're saying now.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's their views, I understand.
So sort of take a vote as a board on approving these two grant applications. The first one being weaving unit for four hundred dollars. I would like to make a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the weaving for the art.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Or aye, any opposed? So that's approved. We'll make a motion to approve one thousand dollars in funding for the math literacy, math and literacy night.
It's just going to be for the math.
For just the math night, one thousand dollars for funding supplies to carry on that event.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Thousand dollars for the math.
Okay. All in group, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next up on my report is our VAC. So we have two of our members of VAC here, Kristen and Ethan, thank you very much. We also have Brian Ellwood, Kelly O'Brien, Julie Hayes, Stacy Mutham. We've got two meetings so far and Kristen, I'll let you take over.
So we've had a couple of meetings. We've met first to organize ourselves and meet and introduce each other, review the current budget and understand where any major discrepancies may be over the previous year. And then the second meeting, we met with Larry Dorr from the central office to get a little bit more in-depth detail about different line items in the budget, any major discrepancies, and then review the basics of the budget book, which was pretty thorough. And as the process unfolds, we look forward to working with Brian and Larry and the school board at.
Do we have a, do we have a timeline yet for local workers?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, I think by November, by your November meeting, you'll have your preliminary.
Weathersfield budget. Okay.
Yeah. That's the goal. And then you'll have, and it'll be public on the website prior to that. Publicizing that will be important. You can go on and look at line by line. And the hope is that it is, if you can look at it for months, you don't really get the tax rate letter from the state until December. So probably not approved as a J.
Right.
So I believe Larry said that we would have ours by the end of October so that we decide to have our next meeting October, or November seventh, which should be plenty of time so that we can look at it as a VAC and also be able to discuss it and then be able to present it at our next board meeting, eighteen.
Yeah.
Any questions, VAC? Okay, thank you, Kristen, Larry, Ethan, we appreciate it. All right, next up is enrollment for FY twenty-six. Two hundred and fifty-six students in grade K through five, seventy-nine students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Ninety-six percent of all of them positive attendance, which is amazing. We've had that meeting, so obviously it's a little bit like, kids want to be here, kids want to learn. So ninety-six percent attended, great job. Good job, guys. Efficiency Vermont, we did meet with Efficiency Vermont and talked a little bit about their light bulb replacement program. So they came on September twenty-second and they were here for about an hour. They met with Jim Tapp, Brian Woodbury, BJ was also there, and then Jen from Efficiency Vermont. They went over everything that they could do. They can replace hundred percent of costs of bulbs, replace them with up to twenty dollars for each bulb replaced. Bulbs can be replaced in phases, there's also an opportunity for a third-party company to come in and do it. They can look at fixture reimbursements, can be between thirty to seventy percent, depending on what we replace it with. The grant will end in twenty twenty-seven, so we're working on that already. There could be some additional funding for controls, occupancy sensors. And we are just making sure that we're establishing what we're replacing and showing the bulbs are being replaced with updated bulbs. So obviously here we need to help bulbs replace, so we're going to be taking advantage of Efficiency Vermont. All right, safety drills, so we did two drills this month. We had an option-based drill for the students and staff, and we also had a fire drill with the Weathersfield Fire Chief. It's been really great having our Weathersfield Fire Chief here to help observe and give us any queries. He's pretty amazed about how quickly we can feedback with the building and how safely we can do it. So that's the second one that we've had with them. And then this past Friday, the staff went through a training with the Windsor County Sheriff and Weathersfield Fire Department. And then we also have Chief Stagner here from Springfield Fire Department to help us with the options based. It was a lot of information, it was pretty heavy for some of our staff. But we did go over things that would happen if, you know, definitely we had an active shooter on campus and found out some things that we might need to work on, but we are pretty safe and we're excited about that. All right, on that same day, we had in the morning, we had a professional development where we worked on data dives. We looked at our data from our all star tests. We also created the weight based on that information. Grade level teams met in the morning looking at assessments. So they had the Thursday, which was an early Thursday, we worked on data dives. And then Friday, we looked at grade level common assessments across the issue. I was with fifth grade team working with them and they did the build for third, second, and first, did not get to enter. But we were able to go through there and get some common assessments so that we have across the entire issue kids are being assessed on the same things and there's commonality so we can compare apples to apples. Figure of me, always an important part of our school. We're focusing right now on habit two, begin with the end in mind. It's one of the things that Kendall and Kayla talk about every morning. Mission statements, if you go over on each classroom, there are mission statements posted. Students and the classroom has been working, students and the teacher have been working on their classroom weights, student weights, and then also habit two focus, and then I will be getting through and going over their BT cap scores to help students in grades four through eight make goals for the upcoming BT cap in March. And then upcoming events, Service Day is this Thursday, super excited about Service Day, always a great event. John mentioned the Weathersfield History Play, in which will be on Sunday. Conference signups, so conference signups will be going full on Monday. All teachers will send out the signup genius, so sign up for your conference spots if you are a parent and want to have a conference. It's a great opportunity for those to sign up and be efficient about it. We have our first Pride Assembly on the twenty-fourth, sixth through eighth grade dances at midnight. Red Ribbon Week, like the girls mentioned, character costume parade. Uh, we have our first pride assembly on the twenty-fourth, six through eighth grade dances at midnight, red ribbon link, like the girls mentioned, character costume parade, Veterans Day Assembly on the seventh. Conferences are starting on the third, we started the week before and go all the way up to the tenth, and then the Veterans Day in the school. And that's about it for me. Any questions for me? I know there was a lot of the, and I was editing.
So part of the, I know it's not technically a drill, but we do like basic life support, Epi train, Epi ten training for the staff as well.
So Epi ten training goes through, so the staff is, some staff members are trained on Epi ten, um, and the nurse does that on her own in staff, especially if you have a student in your classroom that could depend on an Epi ten, you will be trained on. We have the testers, I don't know if they have the orange and the orange ones that we have tested in other field. And then we do have ten, about ten staff members that are stockably trained, and so each teacher that has our staff member but has one of the red bags, everybody has a red bag, but they're stockably trained, you have that kit in there, the attorney kit, and they talk about the importance of making sure you know how to prepare there. Um, prior to, you know, emergency acting.
There's one question.
Sure.
Because seeing the teacher conferences on there reminded me of it. Um, so are electives now being graded?
Yes, they are.
But they haven't been announced, right?
Correct, they were passed through before, so.
Okay.
But they are being graded, but they do not count towards a student's academic achievement progress for, at this one. It's just your core subject matter.
Expectation that blind teachers get graded in?
Yes, they should be putting grades in on a regular basis, and I've been monitoring that a little bit more, to make sure that students or staff are being graded in. Um, looked today and it seems like most, all the core teachers in middle level, I'm assuming that's what you're going to do, I hate to assume, but you know what happens. Um, but all the core teachers have definitely have multiple grades in, and I'm checking the electives as well.
Okay.
Okay, next items for discussion, SU budget committee update. I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Just a couple of things for me. Um, I sent out, I think actually Lori sent it out for me, a survey for all of you, I just want to make sure you got it on the district quality standards. We are, um, we are being asked to self-score this year, and I don't know if they're going to do the information, but we're being asked to self-evaluate, so we're going to do that. Um, and we would love your help on the district standards part of the DQS. I think uh, by mid-November, I think it's meant, so. We've got time. Um, Brian talked a little bit about assessments, so we just completed fall star and DIBELS assessments, DIBELS is K-two. Um, as you heard, staff engagement data dives, the building level, level, the instructional team leaders, so Kristen would be there to help with that at Weatherfield. We'll do an SU level data report in, in October for anybody on the SU board, and then the building level data report in November for your local source. Brian and Kristen will take care of that. Um, Act one thirty-nine, which is the early literacy law, requires that we send letters to parents of students who are significant, complete a little of the benchmarks, so those have gone out to parents. Um, and we've created intervention groups based on those scores, so that's underway and in progress. And we tried to really, the letter, um, we had to send it last year, and it was really, uh, we got some feedback that it felt very impersonal and cold, and people were, had questions about it, so we worked hard to make it more friendly letter with more information for, for parents, so.
Christine, is that just for stars or is it for the DIBELS?
It's for DIBELS, just for DIBELS, yeah. By law, we have to do that. Um, just want to keep you updated on the redistricting task force, what's going on, so they had a meeting Friday. Um, they're, as you know, they can, they're charged with bringing up some free maps to the legislature by December one. The three maps, they're kind of forming, I guess is the best word. There's one around career and technical ed centers, that's one map, um, that's being proposed. One is around regional high schools, and one is around GOSEs. So I'll, I'll keep you, um, there's nothing official yet, but I'll keep you posted, their, their next meeting is in October on the twenty-eighth. They have put forth, and I put it in my newsletter, but I wanted to bring it up here, there is a survey that um, is asking for input, so I encourage everyone to take it. And then there are public hearings that are happening for across the state, first one was Friday. Um, the next one is next Friday, let's see, it's so small. Um. October sixteen, and the next one that Lee is running gray from six to eight, but there is the option to join virtually, so um, please share that widely and show up and, and share your thoughts. Uh, just part of that law, Act seventy-three, does require class size minimums to go into effect next year. So Larry and I are working with principals on class size minimum requirements, these are the, these are the levels. Kindergarten is not in the law, so there are no requirements for kindergarten. First grade, uh, ten students in each classroom, two through five twelve, six through eight fifteen, nine through twelve eighteen. Um, the other thing in Weatherfield does have multi-grade, you can have multi-grade classrooms, but only two, up to two, so you take my three. Um, so if they're, you know, if Weatherfield is not meeting those minimums, that will impact your budget, but it looks like you're within the. Um, quarterly financials is my, the last thing I want to bring to your attention.
Excuse me. On the, the task force, and correct me if I'm wrong, the impression I've gotten and what I've read is that it really, it's not definitive exactly how the governance is going to be. Where I'm going is that, uh, citizens ask, are we still going to have a school? And nobody can really answer that.
That's right.
And that's several years down the road. Um, and because our, we're on the bubble for the upper grades for class size, whether we're one or two off, whether or not we can, you know, another neighboring school, a couple actuaries, do we get them? Um, so there's a million different questions, and most of them aren't answered, the, the, the redistricting is probably one of the easier tasks compared to what's lies ahead.
Um, not according to the people on that.
Wow.
The timeline is outrageous, um, to do what they're asked to do, or what they're being asked to do, and the timeline they're being asked to do in it is unreasonable, and they've said that publicly, it's very challenging. Um, they need, they, they need data to do the work they've been asked to do, and, and they haven't received all the data that they need from the agency, so it's.
That's the weak point right there.
Yeah.
The, um, AOE is being asked to do things, and they're short, they've been short-staffed for years, they're still short-staffed now, but that's piled on top of them with a pretty aggressive timeline.
Yes, yeah. So we'll see, um, you know, no, yeah, there are no definitive answers right now.
Right.
And from what I understand, when they deliver the maps, up to three, so they don't have to do three, but up to three, I believe it is. Um, it, those maps go to committee, so it's not an up or down vote on the floor, it's, they go to committee, which, you know, in committee.
Right.
Things change, good change, um, so, you know, we likely won't know until springtime.
February, very early, at least.
Yeah.
Probably March.
Yeah. So depending on where the maps are drawn, that will inform the governance structures, right? Of course, it'll look like. Representation on the sports, that will look like.
Right.
But yeah.
And the voting board group is also working simultaneously, because we don't know exactly the representation that we want to get.
Correct, yeah. Christine. Interesting times we're living in.
Hmm.
Um, okay, I just want to quickly go over the financials, I don't know if any of you had a chance to look at them, but you're in good shape. Um, the first, the first page, revenue. And uh, the.
Should we get a copy of that?
Uh, well, TJ, did you copy these? Funny, I thought you'd. Yeah, no, I know, I didn't have access, it's there in the portal, but I, um, we can get a copy, so the. Trying to make.
I think they've copied it. Looking at my screen. What's going on? Yeah.
Very good.
That, I don't know if that's.
Yes.
Okay. So the, the um, large amount in red, the ninety-six thousand, they said, Larry, what is that? And that is, um, that's tech, tech ed, and he doesn't project that at this time, but it will come back, so we get revenue on ticket. Um, next page is expenditures by account. And this is a, this is a summary, um. And he, um, what Larry said is most of the tuition bills, which is, um. Other purchase services, I believe, is tuition, a lot of the bills haven't come in yet, and he did tell me today that when you encumber, they don't encumber tuition, they wait for the tax and bills to come in, because they're all different to their house, to school. So the next page is just going to detail on the expenditures, it's a more high-level counting. Uh, there is a little bit of variance in the paraprofessional line and the teacher line, and that is purely, um, who's hiring what they're paying. So different teachers on the salary scale make different amounts of money, so you're saving a little bit on the teacher end, but spending a little more on the parent, parent end, and that just depends on where they fall. Um, there was a little bit. Yes, so this is the biggie, so the three hundred and fifty-eight thousand in red, um, which stood out, was an error, so the, a bill was paid. The money was encumbered, and the bill was paid, but not using the encumbered funds, so that will be corrected on my next day. So it's not, it's not a bad thing. And then energy is up, and that is, because energy is up, and when we made this budget, it was, I believe, a question. So expenditures, and then the last page is just your general fund accounting. So, um, the one ninety-eight nine sixty-six is what you have basically in the checking account on July one hundred and twenty-five, so that's coming on the budget. And the revenue forecast of the encumbrances and the projected surplus, which is the tuition, all leans out, so Larry says that you are in great shape right now, so I'm going to really be concerned about. Um, I will make sure that we get copies, so you can send me the, anything I will that we did.
Yeah.
Here. Okay, you'll dance, so.
Okay. Question?
Oh, John, yes.
When we go to the last page.
Yeah.
Things are looking really rosy, a lot probably will change between now and June thirty, if I understand that, my first time through with the school budget.
Yeah.
Um. As the audit commence, first twenty-five.
They, they just finished, they were there for three days, in October, there were no findings, um, and that's, the past couple of decades are been findings, that's good sign. There were a couple of comments, I think they're called, which could turn into findings if you don't correct them.
They have to write something.
Yeah, yeah, uh, and they will, um, I think it takes about a month for it to be published, so in November, we should have the actual audit.
Did they have a preliminary projection on where we stand, or they don't speculate?
No, this year, no, they're just auditing the books from, from last year.
Right. The, the reason I'm asking is because we're going to be working on a budget, and we don't know, we're trying to get rid of the deficit, and I.
Um, I, I don't really answer that very easily, you know. So your, your question is where you stand on audit, when you did that year?
I know the last time I spoke with, with Larry, he, he, he was predicting pretty much spot-on.
Yeah.
At the SU and for us, maybe with, maybe with a little bit of breadth, but not much, I hope that holds true.
That's, that's what he said to me as well. So it might be a little over, under, but not.
Okay.
Yeah.
But if this budget held true, break till June, which it won't.
Yeah.
It would be nice, but probably won't.
Probably not, yeah, it's just, actually, these numbers he told me are from September thirtieth, so it's a point in time.
Yeah.
Gives you a picture.
Well, I don't have it down, Joe.
Brian, did we get that grant approved for the doors?
We have not heard back from them yet, still, we're still keeping our fingers crossed, hoping.
Nice.
We were supposed to find out two weeks ago, so.
I know, it sounds like I haven't heard of it, so.
Yeah, no, I would have reported, no. Yes, we put in the grant, then get it to go over to those.
What was the total cost of that?
About thirty thousand dollars.
For all the doors, or just a couple of?
Just a couple of doors. Yeah, they're, they're expensive, and all the mechanisms, and the daily lease and everything like that, yeah, so.
And we have a supplier or somebody, a contractor ready to do, okay, yeah. Um, okay, any other questions about the reports? Okay, um, items for discussion followed by motions, SC budget committee update. I assume, is anyone doing that?
Me.
You, Sarah, okay.
I think Christine pretty much covered it mostly, we've ended our meetings because Larry produced this one in record time, which was, I'm very appreciative of that, I know that, um, we're one of the driving factors of that, but, um. So, yeah, uh, it's all out for public knowledge, it's on the website, it's, um, very thorough, the budget book, um, as it was last year, it's a great tool, hopefully the community will use it. Um, obviously, there's some things that are not in there, I know the special ed, um, service plan, uh, is not till mid-October, which is right about now, so he's updating those things as they come in. Um, and I'm sure that he shared with you on the VAC that, um, some of the drivers are, um, obviously, health insurance is up again. Um, he put in a good estimate, which he's pretty usually spot-on with that, so, um, he put that in, um, we're up, you know, special education, um, is a huge part of the budget. Um, like fifty-five percent of the budget, so, um, that's huge. Uh, but other than that, um, we, we do have our new transportation contract, uh, that was another one of my notes. Um, just to be reminded that we did approve that last year to stay with the company that we had, which in return did cost us a little more money, but, um, I feel, I've heard all the things still that we still have our stability with that, so, um. Those are kind of the big factors, but a lot of it is pretty similar, healthcare.
Healthcare.
Yeah, special ed, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, does anybody have any questions about that?
Our healthcare, the teachers, uh, through the union, that's gone through the state, am I correct?
Yes.
Support staff.
Through the state.
Through, so all of it's through the state.
Same.
Which we have, so we don't have any control whatsoever.
He estimated another, it's just under twelve percent increase again this year, so it's, it's huge.
They are trying to cut their costs, we had, um, I was at a meeting with the Mountain Board, I think it is. And, um, Bee Hi, they are cutting, um. GLP ones, is that for people that don't have a, are prediabetic or have some heart condition, I believe that, um, is dangerous. Um, the, the costs, there was a graph of the cost of those drug, prescription drugs for the past four or five years, and, um, they have increased by millions and millions of dollars, so. They're, they're not going to allow those anymore, um, which is supposed to kind of help them rein in their costs, but they're still, the insurance company itself is not doing well either. So they're trying to cut costs as well. Yeah, it is definitely a driver of budgets all over the state.
Anyway, anything to add on the report, any questions? Thank you, Sarah. Um, decoupling capital construction debt.
That's a, that's a letter that, um, here, it was written by, primarily came from the Woodstock of Mountain View Board. And it, it, it asks, um, the legislative leaders to consider taking construction costs out of the, um, for, for the threshold for student costs, because currently, those costs factor into that, um, for student costs. And there is a threshold that we have to standard, or we get finalized. So they asked if any other boards would like to. So they asked if any other boards would like to sign on to the letter. So that is a board decision, whether you want to sign on or not. The Mountain Scotty Board did agree to sign on at their meeting last week, but should everybody see the letter?
Did everyone, okay, yep.
So you just have to take a...
Yeah, so I...
One of the components of Act 83 was school construction. And this is kind of jumping the gun on what might or might not happen with that. The problem with Act 83 was it's an idea with no funding. And so I understand where they're going. It's interesting, because I signed our bond payment this morning, and we'll be done paying in '27.
Right, yeah, yeah. So it may not, it might help you for a year or two. I will say...
Interesting to find out where, where the money will come from when there is no local board. You know, it'd be a town problem to upkeep this building. Capital projects, that's a good question, something to worry about, I guess.
Yeah.
However, the $15,000 threshold, we have to get rid of it.
I know the needs stay wide, right there in the billions. And, and that's back when we got the funding that we did, and it didn't work out well because they've overextended themselves, and then they cut it off, and it's went shut off ever since. And consequently, schools just haven't been able to, they can't even fix the roofs because they can't get a bond passed.
I mean, part of the maps that they're creating should take into account what construction needs to happen across the state.
And then somebody's got to decide with Act 83, this building is worth fixing, not this one. But some buildings just aren't worth fixing.
Yeah.
My Woodstock.
Yeah. Hey, other questions for that? Crosswalk on Route 5?
Do you want to have a decision on that?
Oh, sorry. So do we make a motion to, for the Weathersfield School Board to sign on to the letter that's being sent to the legislature? Decoupling capital construction debt? Or does anyone have any feelings about that? Or is there, is there a deadline that we need to do this?
I think Sherry said before, you know, January.
Oh, okay.
They wanted, I think she wanted, they were trying to call a special meeting, but I believe that's not... So...
You mean a special meeting before the legislature?
Yes.
I won't, I won't know. And let me explain my reasons. It's coming from Mountain View. Mountain View has a very specific agenda. I appreciate, Mac, that, you know, their school is in bad repair and probably needs re-placed. But there's also a regional discussion that's taking place. And to even, I'll just leave it at that, that's close enough.
Okay, well, you make a motion to, to sign the letter now, or? If, I personally feel like I would want, I would want to wait, I want to wait till the next meeting, so I can really look at this and maybe
I agree.
Do some more research and maybe send emails, ask questions to the Mountain View Board, if that's allowed, whoever wrote the letter.
Yeah, for sure.
I would agree.
Okay, so I agree, we'll go on the next, next month. All right, crosswalk on Route 5.
We are at a...
I have one on the agenda.
Oh, you did?
Okay, because we didn't know we did. I've noticed that there's several families that live across behind the Mormon church, as well as other people that want to get across Route 5. The speed limit's 40, people do 50. We have our flashing lights during school hours, which may or may not have some influence. I talked with the town manager because who should take the lead on trying to push VTrends into putting a crosswalk down at the bottom of the road? And we even really have a firm feeling one way or the other. And possibly, if we take a parallel approach with the town with VTrends, we might actually be able to get a crosswalk with some kind of marketing that may or may not help. At least it'll look like a little bit safer place to cross the road than just playing Pac-Man trying to get across the road. Frogger, that's the one. And, you know, we haven't had an accident, but years ago, a student was killed over in Perkinsville because of a lack of sidewalks. Weathersfield had plans for a sidewalk, and the voters turned it down, it was going to cost $15,000. Sidewalks are a common feature for traffic, as well as providing a safer place for people to walk. But nonetheless, I've watched the families walk across the road. Visibility's good, but there's too many distracted drivers out there now. And at least what we could do is maybe maybe there'll be a barrel, but then someone's got to put it up and take down every day. And ideally, we'd get them to put the flashing lights up that you activate when you want to cross the road. And that, those actually worked pretty good. The obstacle we're going to run into, I feel from past experience, because there's no sidewalk on either side, the state's going to say, we don't put crosswalks in that don't connect to something. So I think it's going to take some pressure, political pressure from our end, using our representatives and our senators to get VTrends to do it at all. But I think it's, I think it's an effort worth making. Obviously, it's October, nothing's going to happen through the winters, so we can continue to work on it and formulate a water in conjunction with the town.
Okay.
So the town being willing to put in sidewalks if that's required for the crosswalk? And then like, that was voted no, would that be brought back up again beforehand?
I don't want to pound it though.
Like, hey, it must have been $15,000, that's cheap.
That was our portion.
Oh, okay.
And whether there's any money available at a federal level now, I wouldn't put any money on it.
Realistically, you're putting a crosswalk where there aren't spaces to cross.
Right.
Like, there aren't sidewalks, and if you look at like where that is, I agree, I think you're a good idea, but the practicality of putting it there may not make a ton of sense if you're someone from the state. So if the town's not realistically looking to put in sidewalks, does a crosswalk there that actually doesn't have sidewalks, is that even doable? Not, I'm not saying this because I don't think we should do it, I just think you could put as much pressure as you want, but if it doesn't make sense, because there aren't sidewalks, that's the piece that I'm a little stuck on. Like, I like the idea.
I understand.
But what would the town do?
Right, I understand your point, and it's a good one. But nonetheless, we still have people getting going across Route 5, which, and an interesting sidebar to that is that stoplights down at the corner, even before this last update, had walk signals, but there were no sidewalks on the other side, and they didn't activate them. When they did the construction, if you notice, they put about a 15-foot sidewalk. Now those crosswalk signals were activated.
So I'm wondering if, like, that is not school property, maybe our letter should be to our town, you know, our DOT or our transportation people in town, find out if they have any information about how to start this process. You know, maybe they know the engineering folks that are going to look at that. So I think we can start small. I'm not sure this is a real school problem. It will benefit the school, but we don't own that property.
You're right.
And so maybe the town should spearhead that, we should be pushing the town as to why it was going to benefit the school. And maybe, that's my opinion, maybe have them write a letter to VTrends with us, you know, signing it, signing the letter. I think we have to, I think we should go to a select board meeting and say, this is, this is our concern we have, and this is an idea that we have to fix that. Where do we go from here?
If the boards are in agreement, when I go back to the select board, incidentally, I'll leave you guys to argue somewhere there. Convey that to them and just see where we can go with it.
So we'll add that to the next agenda to just get it updated, John, can you give it updated?
Yeah.
Okay.
You'll meet John with them before November 18?
Like I said, I don't expect any big action, but I think we get an initial letter out and probably get a zing letter back, then we can pursue it a little more aggressively.
So you'll be able to meet with them before our meeting on November 18th? Or at least, okay, let them know what we're trying to do. Anything else on items for discussion by anyone here? Okay, do we have a meeting for executive session? Okay. Okay, so our next board meeting is November 18th. We already talked about a few things to add to the agenda.
We'll have the student drug report.
Student drug report.
And the front admin report.
Okay.
That's the budget update.
We'll have the VAC, or we have the final?
VAC. We will have the final.
No, okay. We'll have something more substantial.
Yes.
Okay.
VAC.
We'll have our preliminary question.
Right.
Well, I think by then Larry should have, on the SU side, everything should be more concrete by then, yeah.
Yep. We'll revisit the decoupling.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, no, decoupling, I think we forgot our, like, school engagement at the beginning. We didn't put it on this agenda.
Oh, okay. So, school board member engagement. Update, check. Anything else? Anything else?
Where's, I was just thinking, it made me think of it when I was looking at the notes. How will we know from Jim, like, what his plans are for the replacement? Like, since we approved it, will we be kept up to date on like what that timeline is going to look up like to see it executed? I mean, it's not to come, I just, I just want to know, you know, now that we approved it, like, what are we? Yeah, keep that moving forward.
And then we'll put the update on the crosswalk. John, can you print back an update?
Yep.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I guess I'll take a motion to adjourn the Weathersfield School Board meeting Tuesday, October 25th. Go adjourn, I'll favor.
Hi.
Hi.